Okay. Okay, it being six o'clock, I'll call to order the May twenty-sixth meeting of the Swansea Planning Board here at Wickham Hall. And I'll begin with the roll call. Scott Self, that's me, I'm here. Michael York.
Yeah.
Jane Johnson.
Here.
Michael Day. Brandon Self, not here. Richard Lane. Selectmen's rep Bill Hutwelker, not here yet anyway. Steve Malone alternate, not here. And Lilly Gallagher alternate. And I will seat Lilly for Michael Day, he's first on the list there. And our agenda this evening is we review and approve, or just approve the minutes of April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. And we have under discussions and other business, we have Christopher and Ann Hamilton regarding a class six road recommendation building on that road. That is tabled on our last meeting of May twelfth. And we have runway fun park, site plan modification request, addition of one ride and onsite storage and a generator. And C is Swansea Gardens threshold for active and substantial development. And we have a under date letter of support for Northern Borders Regional Commission grant. And site plan review regulations, we will discuss those and any other business as may be required. But the records show that Michael Day has entered the meeting and I will seat Lilly for Brandon.
I'm sorry, you're seating Gallagher for?
I'm seating Gallagher for Brandon Self.
Thank you.
Yep. So first off is the minutes for April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. And does anyone have any additions, changes, anything on those minutes? I do, if no one else does, but you do. Oh, I didn't see, I wasn't even looking, yeah.
I want to make sure that I'm not making a mistake on this, but on page three or four, where it starts Angela Pate. It says, this was about marketplace housing. Is that the term marketplace or is it market rate?
She used, I think she used marketplace. I don't, well, maybe she used market rate.
You know, is marketplace a valid term to use in this? I had been.
It may be.
I think it would mark right on page three of four.
She would have meant. Interchangeable for the two?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. She may have said that anyway, so I guess we know what she meant. I don't know if she said market rate or. I did not notice that, no. I had a few on there. I just want to just clarify some things in, in the minutes in case we haven't heard the last of this. And so where it starts on page three or four, and Beverly, I have all these written down, so you don't have to type it all out. I can just give you these papers, but we just need to know if the board agrees with it or not. If they do, then I'll just hand them over to you. Okay, so it's in the first paragraph. Under Planning Board twenty-one oh oh seven, says S Self summarized the request noting a letter from Mr. Franks. And I just wanted to put in there dated April twelfth, twenty twenty-two, because we have to refer to the letter we're talking about there. And stating that, and there's a double that, and then we'll just take the other that out. But in the rest of it is, they're setting out the intent of the developers, a modification pursuant to New Hampshire RSA six, seven, four, five, eight, or sixty-one. And stated further, this letter shall serve as our written statement of intent pursuant to New Hampshire RSA six, seven, four, sixty. That all stays in there. The next paragraph down. I'll just start reading from the beginning. S Self noted, the RSA is clear that this intent must be filed with the application, which it was not. He said the planning board doesn't have the authority to waive any RSA. It says the, and it says application, but it should be, it says the letter of intent must be submitted with the application. And then the rest of the paragraph just stays the same. That sound proper to everybody there, okay? Moving down to the third paragraph. And it states Frank said six, seventy-four, sixty was referred to. He said this application has always been presented as workforce housing. S Self said the RSA, and we're crossing out RSA because it was the application. S Self said the application has to reference RSA six, seven, four, sixty. And we're just crossing out with the application after that, just to clarify that. Let's see, and then goes on to say, not just refer to workforce housing, the chair asked for consensus. York said the application does not meet the requirement. There was consensus that they did not file. And it says RSA six, seven, four, sixty, and it should be a letter of intent. They did not file a letter of intent with the application, and therefore they cannot hear the site plan modification request. And we need to put down under RSA six, seven, four, five, eight through sixty-one. That's clear. Let's see, Franks, I think nothing else in there. Franks said they have referred to workforce housing, especially expressing written intent. As self said, you have to refer to the specific RSA. He said, we are not disputing the submission, we are disputing the procedure. Okay, next paragraph down. I rewrote some of that paragraph from the bottom there, but anyways. It starts off that Angela Pate, actually that was the one that we were looking at before Angela Pate was present, and she asked about marketplace housing. Would the planning board look at it differently? S Self said that this request is about a modification, we cannot move on to a modification. Self said the drawing originally submitted was for a flat roof building and the planning board approval was based on a pitched roof. And then from there, it talks about modification has to do with changing dormers to transformer, but we need to clarify that. And what it was, was the, or actually I interjected this and we'll see if the planning board agrees with this or not. The chair said the board has approved two formal modification to this plan. One had to do with the dormers and a trim line change. The other was the relocation of the transformer pad. He said that Mr. Franks is asking for a reconsideration of the pitched roof requirement that the board voted on when the site plan was approved. He then read from Mr. Franks' April twenty-first, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two letter. And quoting, our request is that the board reconsiders the pitched roof requirement, because that's what we were deciding on at that time. Under his request was to reconsider and not the modification in his actual letter there. So let's see, the chair said that a reconsideration is an appeal. He said RSA six, seven, seven, fifteen lays out the requirements to file an appeal. He said an applicant has thirty days to file that appeal. He noted the planning board cannot waive the thirty day requirement. And actually, that wasn't changed from the original paragraph, but it's. I will hand you, I'll hand you all of this stuff there. Yeah, yeah, I just, I just want to see if the planning board remembers it that way. And if that's what we were talking about there, we're just being specific about the RSAs and, and what we were deciding on and where it was, you know, where it came from, which came from that letter. And let's see, I think there was just maybe, yeah, there's one here about the motion. Motion was made by York that this is an appeal and the board cannot move forward based on the specification of RSA six, seven, four, sixty. It should be six, seven, seven, fifteen, because that deals with, and I think that's what you meant, that that deals with the. The procedure for an appeal.
Yeah.
Okay, so we just replaced six, seventy-four, sixty with six, seventy-seven, fifteen, because that was that, that motion we had. Think that might be it. So if, if everyone is agreement with that and follows that and has nothing to say else about it, then we need a motion to approve the minutes with the clarifications. I'll hand them over to Beverly. A motion by Michael York to accept the minutes as amended, seconded by Richard Lane. Is there any further discussion?
Actually, we had a question about abstaining since I wasn't at the meeting. Do I, because a couple of meetings ago, we talked about that, do we?
We did. In, in my opinion, you should abstain, but Beverly was saying that at one of the law lectures she was at, she said that the planning board, even though you weren't there. You should vote on it. So I guess, you know, you can.
The way they describe it is that you take on the responsibility when you become a member of a land use board. You take on the responsibility of reading the minutes ahead of time, you get them ahead of time.
Yeah.
And even if you weren't there, you should vote one way or the other and not abstain. I don't know, I don't think, really don't understand why the lawyer said that. But that's the responsibility you take on, on that, in that role.
Where were we?
This is a, a seminar.
Well, what's the board consensus on that, you know?
I don't know how he could say vote yes on something he doesn't, wasn't there.
So I don't either.
My opinion would be you just vote no.
Vote no?
Yeah, vote no or abstain, whatever.
You should abstain or not vote at all. So.
But you can't vote yes, because you weren't here.
That's, everybody think that's the consensus? If so.
Okay.
Mr. Day is going to abstain and anyone will take the vote. Right, we have the second, we have the motion in the second. All, any other further discussion on that? Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, so would you just pass those down to our minute ticker there? And then, and if there's something that you can't understand in there, just you may call it something, my writing isn't that right. Okay, so we've done the minutes and we need a, yes.
There are no changes to this, this, all entirely rewritten?
That's, yeah, that's the addition. You'll see where it says insert on one of those paragraphs. That's the paragraph that I rewrote. And you, and it has a lot of the wording you had in there, but it's just clarified a little bit.
Fine, thank you.
Yep, and, and you are great at your job. We aren't saying that, that you didn't get anything right. Just want to make sure it's clarified to, in case we have a question about it. Okay. Regional impact. We need a motion deciding whether anything on tonight's agenda would require us to notify any surrounding towns. If nobody thinks so, then our motion is in order. Motion by Jane that there is nothing on tonight's agenda that would require us to notify surrounding towns. Is there a second? A second and by Michael Day. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, and we'll be on that. So under discussions and other business, up first, we have Christopher and Ann Hamilton. And this has to do with the table decision or non-decision about building a house on a class six road. And they're looking for a recommendation from the planning board. This is up on. Table Hill Road, yeah, thank you. Up on Table Hill Road, off of the lake up there. And I think most of, most of us were here last week when they were in, and the applicants here, is that you folks right there? Yep. Do you have anything to add in on or any of that stuff? Nothing to add in on. It looks like you went to the zoning board of adjustment and they said, okay, they gave you a thumbs up on that, okay. So do we have any recommendation, whether this should go through or not?
Looking at the RSA six, seventy-four, forty-one, they're satisfying under C one, two, and three, so as far as that concern is to go.
It's, yeah, it's good. And, and do you have any?
I, I can't see why, yeah, this is going to be for the slide because it's, it's a conflicting thing to make. The presence that they gave us, out of the two thousand nineteen one, was done, all those projects were done before. The section four, eight, three was passed by the town. And requiring the frontage of a class, or a town maintained road or state maintained road.
Are you sure about that?
Yes.
When, this, this is, that's a recent thing you're talking about, isn't it?
Two thousand and eight, according to our.
And before that, you don't think that was in the zoning?
I don't believe so, because it was amended in March, it was voted on on March eighth, two thousand, March two thousand and eight.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, I don't know if you're right or not on that.
Well, if, if I'm wrong, then the book is wrong. And once we just got.
And did it say specifically that that was the amendment that was added?
Section four. Should be, I wrote down the page number two, page twenty-eight to seventy-nine.
And while he's looking that up, even, even though our zoning ordinance says that, and it probably does, I'm not doubting him that it probably does say that. The variance is for, is there just so that everyone doesn't have to follow the full letter of the law, because everything is different. They give people a chance to go to the zoning board of adjustment, just so they could do something that is out of the ordinary, that's not allowed in the zoning.
Yeah.
Did you find it?
Zoning ordinance amended through March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. So this is the updated one.
Okay, well.
But, you know, okay, yes, it's amended March eleventh, two thousand and eight.
Sarah. If I might provide a little bit of clarification, we went through a lot decades of zoning ordinances to try to find where. It started calling out classics roads with the frontage, because the frontage has always existed. I think back to nineteen forty-seven, or it's existed for a very long time in that district. But classics roads were not called out until, I don't want to say the exact year, but somewhere between like nineteen eighty-six and nineteen ninety. I was going to revisit that as we're working on our classics policy, but with the amendment that you're seeing there. It may be that that line was amended in two thousand and eight, but classics did not start being called out. And, you know, started being called out sooner than that.
Right, but they, but this says, the frontage, okay, it's, all lot should be at least three acres in size of two hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage. On a town or state maintained road.
Correct.
So that has, not road has been used for a long time.
But we don't know whether that particular part of the ordinance was put in specifically with that amendment. Yeah, that may have been in there. It may say it was amended up to whatever the date it says it is, but it may have been a different, it may have been.
It could be.
A five foot difference on the frontage or something like that. It doesn't specify that it was that.
See, being unclear, it's going to have to be a decision by the slide, so I would make a recommendation in the way.
So, yeah, we'll get beyond that.
I'm going to make the decision, because I, yeah, it might need something to explain, but that's.
Yeah, so recommending, do you have any objections or any word on it, Michael? No.
I think it sounds like they satisfied their zoning board requirements, when I would say, good luck, congratulations.
Jane, same way. Yeah, well, I agree with the rest of you too, that, that they, you know, they've got a piece of property up there. They knew that there was a possibility that they couldn't build up there, so they aren't trying to say that, oh gee, we didn't know. And they're, they're saying that, yes, we'll take care of the road, the three hundred feet up there, fine with us, and we'll take all that responsibility. And we're always, like I said before, I think, the other meeting, we're always looking for places for people to live, you know, so they want to do it. I would say it's fine with them, so just a motion of recommendation, because we are deciding on it for them, just a motion of recommendation that in the affirmative would be good. And we'll pass it on to the selectmen and they make the final decision. We need somebody to make the.
Pass along these, discuss.
Yeah, okay. Motion by Richard Lane, that the planning board is in the affirmative, correct, okay. Is there a second? Second by Lily is. Affirmative to build the house, building the house on the class six road.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that okay with you, your motion? Affirmative to building a house on a class six road. You're right, you're correct, okay. And that's okay with your second, correct, okay. Is there any further discussion?
I don't, should we reference the RSA's point where they are taking on the responsibility of that, that second, section C one, two, and three? Because they've satisfied that through the zoning board.
They have, right, so I don't think we need to reference that at all. Yeah, just, they were just looking to see if the planning board had an objection to it. And it was a good reason that planning would, I mean, the selectmen would take into consideration to either deny it or approve it. That's just what they're looking for, they just want to give us a say in it. Any further discussion? Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, so now your next stop is selectmen. Good luck to you. Now, item B on discussions, and this is runway fun park, and it's a site plan modification they're looking for. They're requesting the addition of one ride and onsite storage and operating their generator again to run the lights. And let's see, I think we have the stuff in our package. Is anyone here from, you are, okay. Anything else you want to add other than what I just said? Or explain something there?
I have my brochure, so if you know anybody that wants to.
Now, wait a minute. That's right, we didn't realize that this is a marketing flaw in the meeting here. We thought you wanted a modification. So what are you looking to do? You're looking to put a ride in there, right?
Yeah, it's a, it's the same type of training you would see in the mall, probably would go on a diameter around these four posts. It's got three cars, runs on one ton electric, and it's just another addition to the.
And, and it says that you're running the generator again this year, so you ran everything on generator last year too, is that what we're saying, yeah? And it also says that you're looking to store five more trailers there. Are they food storage?
We had some trailers out there. We didn't realize we were in the, the wrong doing it. I, I, so I apologize for that. We had more trailers on the property, the big ride trailer, which is on my fiduciary business, was left two days ago. House trailer that was out there is gone. Couple of the other ones are truly ours. There's three trailers that are actually ours. And I'm still looking for a place to get, get those parts off the property. A friend of mine bought four food trailers and one game trailer that's on the property. He's looking for a place to go to store. And so what I'm asking is, is can he keep them there for a period of time or does he have to?
Okay. And so that's the request. We're, we're looking for a site plan modification for, to add the ride in there. That would be a permanent thing. But if we modify the site plan for the trailer storage, then that would be a permanent thing too. We may be able to put a timeline on it. I'm not sure up to the board here, but we might not want to renew it. So you can store a bunch of trailers there, you know, it's a amusement park, we were, we seen a bunch of trailers there, so. I guess the generator, he was there, we knew he was going to run a generator anyways. I don't know what you're really looking for.
It's tucked behind the building, you can't even really see.
But are you looking for a modification for the generator to be permanent?
No, the price of diesel.
Okay. So the real modification, I think here is just the addition of the ride, because that's going to be permanent. Is that correct? Yes. So, you know, what if the board members think, we could, you know, the ride is small, I don't see that, that's probably any problem with the site plan. The storage of the trailers maybe, because. It isn't part of the business, you know, the storing of her friend there, which is good, you know, nice of them to do that. And it's in a business area, there are no properties around there really to complain about it. But again, like I say, if we modify the site plan for that, then it gives them the opportunity to, to have them there permanently all the time. I'm wondering if we can, I don't know, I wish Michael was here, our code enforcement officer, to see if there's a permit that you could have instead of that.
Mike, really, do they have any issue with the three that we own?
No, yeah, I'm not, not referring to those.
Yes.
They're part of your business, but the others that don't belong to you are not part of your business. And that's, that's what I'm talking about here. How about the rest of the board? So weigh in on that, anybody?
Well, I don't, I don't see any problem with his trailers for his business. But we don't want to get into where he's gonna, you know, now he's got a couple of friends that have trailers there. Then they're gonna have a couple more people that have trailers there, so I don't want it to become, no, I think we'll give them a reasonable time for these people to find a place to put their trailers. But I don't think we want to let trailers that get stored there, either the way it's run by the business. A friend by the business is fine with me, but nothing else.
I think I put in there that, you know, he, no matter what, those, those will go to county fairs, probably starting by September one, and they'll be out of there, they won't be coming back.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Yeah, his last spot is Lancaster Fair, and he's just going to leave them there, once he gets to that.
Anybody else want to comment on, on what we're doing here?
Mr. Chairman, we have had other people come in and we've heard complaints from the public about trailers being parked in obvious places. And how we've tried to make them disappear into the greenery or take them moving back and all that sort of thing. So I don't see how we can allow extra trailers to be parked right out of an open area like that. It, it doesn't add any appeal certainly to our town, excuse me, scene. And I haven't heard a cadre of voices say, wow, that's beautiful, more trailers. So I, I don't, I, I don't think we should issue anything that would continue an allowance of trailers to be there. And I think we should ask that they be moved as soon as possible.
Anybody else?
I pretty much agree with that. Those, those trailers have been there since, what, last fall, late last?
The, the four food and the one game trailer have been there since March. Now, my three trailers have been there since the fall. There was also a White House trailer, which is off the property.
My point being, there's a man of time for that, for that individual, for those individuals to find homes for those. And that being, James referring to the ice war, that they are at present time, business related.
All right, so, so let's do this. The modification should be for the rides, or the ride, one ride is adding there, and the generator mentions in there. And nothing mentioned about the trailers in the modification. And so if, if that's an agreement, then we need a motion to that order. Okay, that you move, Michael York moves to approve the site plan modification for the kitty train ride and the generator. Okay, is there a second?
So.
Second by Richard Lane. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, so as far as the trailers. I think the planning board could make a recommendation on it that they be removed as soon as possible or a reasonable length of time. That's fine with me too, and if it's fine with code enforcement, but you need to go in and see our code enforcement officer and. See what he says about it. Sarah, would you check with him to see what he says about that? Because again, yeah, the, the planning board is not enforcement. We, you know, we can vote on site plans and things like that, but we have nothing to do with enforcement of the zoning ordinance. But we can make recommendations like that. And the trailers, to be specific, the ones we're talking about are the ones not associated with his business.
Yeah, I do want, I do want to remove those, so it's like, I've got twenty-eight acres and it's all wooden. I can't put them in my yard, otherwise it'd be there.
Okay, well, you know, that's, so it looks like you have your modification for your site plan for the kitty ride. And as soon as the practical, the, to remove the trailers that are not associated with your business. And see our code enforcement officer for any further permits or anything you might need. I don't think so.
Okay.
You sure should be. Yeah, okay.
As soon as practical was ambiguous.
It is, but I'm, I'm leaving it up to codes, but there's. Well, the planning board is not enforcement. We can't, I don't, Mike, Mike can do it.
Yeah, okay.
But I don't think the planning board can do it. We could do it in a site plan, that if there was, be a timeline on specific things, but this is not part of the site plan. We excluded it from the site plan, so it falls on, I think anyway, it falls under enforcement. And anybody else, you know, you have it, agree or disagree?
I'm sure Sarah's going to tell Michael that's the only question.
I would just say that I think it would be to your business advantage to get them out of there too.
Yeah, because you want people coming there.
Correct.
You don't want to say, this is a nice park. The people that comes actually say, you gotta set those up? Those look like they serve some good food. They all talk about wanting a food truck faster or things like that. I don't want those. I did my friend a favor and I have no problem telling him, he's got to go.
Yeah. Okay.
Appreciate you, man.
You're welcome.
Good luck with the ride.
Yeah, thanks for getting going.
Get inspected tomorrow, hopefully we're out to be spinning this week.
Good for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item is item C, and that's Swansea Gardens and threshold for active and substantial development. And this is, should be in our package, in my. Okay. So we're, we're looking to see, and I assume that that's you, correct?
Yeah, my name is Bob Simons from Descent City, man.
Okay. And you're in here to find out if what you intend to do there is going to be enough to satisfy the improvements, substantial improvements.
Correct. We have, we just purchased the land from Asher Construction. And I believe they obtained site plan approval and a one-year extension, which will run out in October. And so we just want to make sure we understand the definition of substantial commencement. And in meeting. And in meeting with staff, we had the impression that the board, we should ask the board for clarification. That tearing down the existing buildings and removing the pavement and the foundations met that definition. And we just want to make sure we get that prior to October.
Okay, yep. Good of you to come in, because the planning board does do that. And it's usually different for every project, so. Good to take a look at that. So this is what, let's see, or everyone can read in the packet what he plans to do. And I don't know if everyone is familiar with that property. There have been several things that have been. Proposed to that property, and this one has approval, and you can see in your packet there. And it looks like what the applicant is going to do is to demo everything on the property and get it ready for development. They're gonna take everything, take the houses down, disconnect any hookups. I don't know that the sewer isn't hooked up on that property yet. I don't think it goes by that property. And the water as well. You're gonna use public water and public sewer there.
There's wells on the site and septic on the site. And as far as private, it will be connected to the public water and sewer.
And you said you're gonna keep the rubble, I think, from the foundations. You don't mean the tear down from the houses on the site, right? The wood and all the stuff.
So typically, what we do on any private, which is demolition, we separate all the material out so that we can recycle those portions. Take the wood and the roofing up to the. Transfer and then the foundation, the concrete and block and asphalt, we grind up so we can recycle it as grass. But all of the other materials that is trash is haul off containers.
Okay. And that grinding can be done on site by the sounds of it. Okay. So let's see, they're going to disconnect all utilities serving the site, installation of silt stock, silt fence or hay bales along the down gradient edge. Of all disturbed acre areas rather to prevent erosion, almost like corrode. Demolition of the residential buildings, which we just said, attached and detached garages, the storage shed and remaining outbuilding. Removal of foundations and pavement, and those are the materials that we're just discussing are going to be left on site for crushing later on. And let's see, and the the site shall be sloped to said to prevent significant tripping hazards. I guess you just gradually slope it down to before you start the excavation there. So it's up to the board to decide whether that's going to be substantial enough to. Keep everything status quo.
Thank you for cleaning up the site already. I noticed what my idea today is from one, what my idea today and all those old vehicles that were out there, they're gone.
Yeah, the previous.
That itself is a big improvement.
Yeah, the previous owner, Ben Olson, worked very, very hard with his tenants to get everything out of there. So.
Yeah, when you say you want to, you want to complete this work prior to October 10th, which is our expiration day, how soon after that would you start actual construction, you think?
So the. One of the issues at hand is the site plan that was obtained by Asher Construction was for 80 units. And the the buildings technically been fully designed, so we are meeting with two architects now to design the buildings. And we weren't sure that we would have that design completed, submitted for permit and be able to pull a permit in time to break ground. But the intent is, as soon as we have the building's design, we may be committed and ask for a modification of the site plan. Based on the actual configuration from our architects. But as soon as that's done, we plan to select a contractor and build. So hopefully, this fall will be in the ground.
So yeah, if there's any change, even sometimes even minor changes, you need to come in front of the board, just just to make sure it's it's what the board approved. So. As long as you know that. Okay, so what does the board think? Will that suffice?
I like, I like the fact that it's moving forward and they're gonna clean the site up and get all that thing. It's gonna be a positive, and I think that's that's enough to consider.
All right, then. That sounds good. Anybody else?
The definition is substantial, being largely but not wholly that which is specified. Meaning specified would be the entire project.
I would say that's, yeah, again, the planning board generally. They can set their own guidelines as to what is considered substantial improvement to each particular project, the way I understand it, anyway. That, yeah, that definition is in there. I guess you could mean it, or it could mean a lot of different things, but each project is different. So that's why the planning board has leeway to do that. And it does look like, yeah, they're moving forward with that. And if they don't get those done by, well, by October 22nd, then the site plan is done. If they do, then it just continues as any other one does until they're finished.
Okay, so you're saying that tearing down the buildings, getting rid of the rubble, crushing that stuff constitutes a substantial. Start on the project that would expire on the 22nd of October.
Yep, to, or yeah, to meet the requirement of substantial improvement. No, it hasn't. And, yeah, and the planning board can say, no, that doesn't. It isn't substantial improvement. You know, that's what we're deciding here. I think it's enough. Personally, I think it's enough to get the project going.
Especially if you see that property where it was. Well, it is an improvement. It is a move forward to have the building available to be.
Because, yeah, they're preparing the site for construction. And I know prior meetings, the planning board has approved or have considered consent and substantial development or. For projects with the site done, sometimes it's with just the infrastructure done and nothing to do with the buildings. The planning board has decided that, yes, that's enough to continue. Again, it's up to the planning board, whatever is decided. Jane.
I I think, maybe I'm wrong, but I think I understand what Richard is saying, because. It is a great start, because those things did have to be out of there. Oddly enough, just this week, I ran onto a YouTube presentation of somebody going around with a. Camera filming the site, and I had not walked on it, and it was horrific. And so I I do think that is a substantial start anyway, but I I also know that they can do that. And still not go on with with the plan. But we have approved the plan that was originally, the site plan that was originally presented for that property was approved. So looking at that, I think this is something that absolutely had to be done, what it could go forward. So it would seem substantial to me. I'm sure it won't be inexpensive, and it'll be a lot of work, and it will certainly improve the site. And if it's done by, is that October 10?
Yeah.
Twenty?
They're expecting it to be done by then, but it's got to be definitely done by the 22nd.
Oh, okay. Well, that's, that's where I am on it anyway. That's what, the way I see it. I don't know.
Yeah, and it's not like they can build something else there. You know, this is a project we approved. And if they don't get to build it, then they don't build it. But at least they're moving forward with it. Again, it's just, it's just there so that projects can't be approved and then just sit there for years and years and years and have nothing done with the land there. It gives the town or the planning board the opportunity to say, well, look, you haven't started it, so it's done, you're done, you know, you have to come back.
Should we replant or some sort of bonding or?
I don't see why, you know.
Just. In your proposal here, your site work is going to be graded to the grade of what's going to be actually finished.
No, sorry, perhaps I was incorrect. So our intention is to demolish the buildings and haul off those parts. The foundations and the asphalt will be stockpiled and either crushed right off or stockpiled for later use. But then, when you tear up the foundation, there's a hole that someone could potentially slip and fall into. So we typically have our demolition contractors rough grade that area to reduce the possibility of someone hurting themselves. So that's the regrading of the slope I was referencing. So we don't plan to change the overall grading of the site. At this time, we just want to start the project by getting this building out of here so that as soon as we have the building designed and the building permit, we can go start the foundations. But at this point, we don't have the design of the building finished, and so we can't pull a building permit, and we wouldn't want to try to put the foundation in now and hope that the building matched it later.
Talking with Mike earlier this week. His concern was when it's torn down and, as you're saying, rough graded. If. They were to walk away. The site is not set up to be safe. And for erosion control, et cetera. That's why I asked about the possibility of bonding. So that we, if they did walk away and the town had to come in or do something or hire somebody come in, then it's covered. It's it's short. But, you know, the bond probably wouldn't be that extensive, but it's just a safety net for the town, just a thought.
Well, yeah, we we do that when the developer is putting in infrastructure, we'll say a road, sewer lines, water lines, or something like that. Where the town does have investment in it, or that the town would be some part of that. In this case, that being a private property there. I know, I just, the planning board, I can't recall a planning board doing that with a property like that. I recall the projects, I don't remember you were on the board, but other projects which had to do with with a lot of infrastructure, roads primarily into the the site. We've had them pull a bond for that and do that first before they start building. But in this case, I just, I don't, really don't see it. It's it's not a very large area.
Mr. Chair, I can appreciate the concern for abandoning the project once we start. One of our main concerns was that having four abandoned buildings there. Is more of a, an attraction for somebody who might. You know, find themselves in a bad spot by breaking in, breaking windows, or, you know, just getting in one of those buildings without someone there all the time. So we actually thought, by tearing down the buildings, the site would become safer. And I think, in talking to code enforcement officer, there's a building permit required for the demolition. And I think we will have a meeting with him to make sure that the erosion control is adequate. So one of your other concerns.
Anybody else? If not, then a motion, one way or the other. And let's see, what would we want to say in the motion?
Motion that the, a motion that the listed. Activities, listed items would meet the requirements of.
Substantial improvement?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Michael Day that the work that the applicant is going to do will fulfill the obligation of substantial improvement to the property. And allow them to continue beyond October 22nd for their site plan approval. Is there a second? We've got to have a second first. Is there a second?
I think Jane had a question first.
But we should, we need a second. Okay, seconded by Michael York. Yes, Jane.
It's substantial commencement.
Commencement? Okay, I'm sorry, I've been using improvement. Okay, substantial commencement. There, we got it right now. Okay, is there any further discussion? Then all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? And okay, if if you get that done by the 22nd, then you can move on. If not, then you're stopped again. He's got till the 22nd to do it. He said he's gonna get it done by the 10th, but he got till the 22nd.
He's probably hoping that his other clients' modifications are gonna be ready for him to come in and see us.
Yep, okay, so good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ten, twelve days. Quick, get done. Twelve days left.
Okay, item D. That's a letter of support for Northern Borders Regional Commission grant. And we have a copy of the letter right here. And has everyone read it, or would you like me to read it? Tell the board. I'll let you have it in your bag. Do they have it in their bag? Okay. And it looks like, looking for a grant for North Winchester Street for maybe next year then, because they're doing South Winchester Street now. And West Street, so to be North Winchester and California Street, probably the same thing that they're doing down there. Paving sidewalks, I guess. They're almost, they're getting ready to pave final code on now down there. So if that's in agreement with everyone, then we motion it in order to direct the chairman to sign the letter. Motion by Michael York to direct the chairman to sign the letter, seconded by Michael, I mean, yeah, Michael, by Richard. Any further discussion? Although in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those opposed? And okay. Let's take care of that. And we had just regular discussion, site plan review regulations. I thought we might discuss just, just like the role of the planning board, you know, what we see the role of the planning board here. The way I see it, the planning board is like the executor of the zoning ordinance. We carry out the. Provisions of the zoning ordinance that the local legislative body, which we are a member of anyway, passes as ordinances. So we carry out those letters of the ordinance as to what they're required to do. Not necessarily to pick apart any of the applications that come or find fault with the applications, just to see that they. Need the requirements of our zoning ordinance. Pretty much, that's the way I see it. So. Anybody else want to jump in? You know, plenty, you see the planning board, just our job in general. That's the way I see it. We just. Make sure that the zoning ordinance or the parts of the zoning ordinance. Pertained to whatever cycling we're working on are carried out. And again, that's all for anything that's non-residential, because, you know, we don't do anything that's residential. So anything that's non-residential.
And I always suggest that we start doing, educating ourselves, because it may become mandatory pretty soon. This legislation now going through the House and the Senate, that's going to require planning board and zoning board. To actually have formal education that they're going to, the land use people will actually give us, but we're gonna be required to do something there. There's a lot, if you go, Sarah can give us the link, I have the link, and you can go ahead and watch videos and stuff of the past. Lessons that they've had. If they ever go to the conferences in person again, they're a fun time to go. And the town usually pays for us to go, plus a mortgage. And then you get to meet with town, people from other boards on other towns and bounce ideas together.
Yeah, which is always helpful to see how they handle certain things. Yep, those, yeah, I've been to some of those, not for quite some time, but I've been to some of those and they were pretty. So are they requiring, are they going to require a credit hours? Is that what you're talking about?
It's something, something like that. It's sort of like, I don't know if it's gonna be a test, or it's just an in-person, either by Zoom or. A conference where you have to have so much education. I don't believe there's going to be any type of test. I haven't seen that in the legislation yet.
Because it shouldn't be. And in the RSAs, it's that the common person is supposed to, they don't want lawyers and whatever bankers or whatever. Sitting on these boards, it's supposed to be the common people from the area that that are familiar with the area to do it. So maybe it would be voluntary. Who knows what they're gonna do there. But it's always a good thing, yeah, just to to learn up or read the RSAs or go over, even if it's just pertaining to whatever specific item is on the agenda for that particular meeting. You know, learn as you go type of a thing, Jane.
I've read recently somewhere about this, that some of the people who have. Inside track on what's going down might. inside track on what's going down might carry some weight in saying that this is destructive to New Hampshire's local control policy. So it very likely will, may not pass.
Yes, but we have to be careful because some of it has been.
Always have to be careful.
Right.
There's something that really confuses me that I would like to be educated on too, and I try. But the planning board sees a site plan. It might be absolutely hair-raising to the general public. But if it's a complete plan, we can't say anything bad.
No.
Meaning what? If it's complete, we can't, we have a lot to say about it. It's just that we have to accept it as complete if it follows our guidelines.
Right.
Okay.
Particular just ones.
Yeah.
So, so, but we have plenty to say about it after we open up the public hearing and get all the testimony. And that is, that is our chance and NASA's public's chance to say, hey.
We do still get to do that.
We do, but, but then in the guidelines of our own zoning ordinance, we have to go by those. And even though the neighbor doesn't like it because it's gonna be the wrong color, you know, in zoning ordinance, the planning board can't go by that. And it's our duty to educate them as well, that, that you just, you have to abide by the, the strict rules and not necessarily, you know, you feel about it.
So hypothetically, how do we work to create these zoning ordinances, ordinances that generally people will not complain about?
Uh, we don't, we don't have to. We shouldn't really, you know.
Well, there's a lot of complaining, so.
So there is, but there's always gonna be complaining, but I don't know if we should, would strive to create ordinances that are fine with everyone and not to get complaints about, just ordinance that are fair for business and property owners. That if you have a piece of property, you should be able to develop that piece of property within reason, but you should be able to develop it. And the planning board is here to help you to, to business, develop those properties, not necessarily stand in their way and say, well, we don't want any more of this or that. They're pretty much there as a liaison to, to help them get going and going in the right direction. And it doesn't mean we have to approve every single site plan, of course, because there are things wrong with them sometimes that we don't approve. But we're there as representative, the way I see it. I'm just saying the way I'm seeing it. We're there as representatives.
Hey, remember, we do go through, in fact, we got criticized slightly, but we tried to block it because I was there. That we do too much as far as going through the zoning and recommending changes, because remember, when we have a zoning change or a new zoning ordinance, it has to go up to the town meeting to vote. So if the people are involved in their town, they have a say in what's going on. That's when they tell us, no, we don't like this, or they do like it.
But what was your point about the selection? What did?
Well, they yelled that because we had too many of them.
Oh, too many for that? Well, it does get overwhelming for the voter, because you go in there and you got a piece of paper that long with all this mumbo jumbo that you've never read before. We've read it, but they've never read it. And you don't understand what the heck it says. You just go to the bottom and say, recommended by the planning board. Okay, that's for me. Beverly, you had something to say?
I just want to make a comment to encourage you to attend some of those sessions that they have.
Yeah.
At the state, well, you can often attend using Zoom and the town pays for that.
Yeah.
And the reason I find it helpful is that you hear the questions from other townspeople. And in my case, it was meditators and, and, you know, people who've bothered rights no law. But in your case, you might hear of an anecdotal incident that would key something off in your own mind and said, hey, you know, that might affect us in the future. Paying, paying attention to that. So it's very helpful because I think each town is kind of insular. You know, you've got your own little world and you have your own set of zoning ordinances when you hear from another community, which is similar in size perhaps, but has other issues. I think it's helpful to that exchange of ideas. So I would highly recommend that.
Yeah. I go to everyone I can. And when I can't go, because we haven't had the in-person for a while now. I, at least once a week, I'm on their site trying to find something that I don't know anything about, or want to get refreshed on and bam, like I go in there and I watch Zoom. They record all of those classes.
Oh, you can go in and, and watch them later on.
Are we talking about New Hampshire Municipal or OSA? Okay. Just clarifying which link I'm sharing.
Often you, if you think of something that you question, you can go to NHMA.
Right.
And find the answer. You can even call and they'll call you back if they can't talk to you right then. And, and assign an attorney to talk to you about the RSA and your problem. And it's, it's really helpful. The town belongs to the New Hampshire Municipal Association, so we are exposed to use that. And that's why they belong.
Yeah. Good stuff. Good stuff to listen to, for sure, because that's right. We get a bunch of stuff that other towns don't get and vice versa. So interesting to know. And.
And personally, I think we ought to be ready because I think Swansea's gonna grow because King can't grow any further. We just have no place to go.
But be ready in what regard?
In regard to get up to stuff on how we should approach things. We, right now, we have a great approach, I think. But just be aware, just to be aware that there's gonna be a lot more projects coming forward, I believe.
But the guidance is the same. The guidance is the RSA is for all of the towns, you know. Swansea, yes, the, the planning board is in charge of, or should be in charge anyway, of, of how the growth develops in town.
Right.
Is what we're supposed to be doing. And yeah, if there's gonna be more development coming our way, we should and probably are ready for it. Uh, but again, that's part of our duties in bringing forth zoning regulations and stuff to the town. The planning board thinks that it shouldn't be developed, say, out the lake road over there. So it stays rural ag with those type of recommendations for rural ag. That's the way, sort of controlling that development. And at some point, that's probably gonna be open for development out there, and they're probably gonna change to residential, or the board probably will change it to residential sometime in the future. But those, some of the things that the, the planning board takes in consideration when proposing zoning amendments.
Yeah, growth has a way of pressuring you to change things the way they're done now.
Yeah, but, but you know, you know, we gotta be looking out for growth, but not in a bad way, you know, in a positive way. The planning board should be looking at it as to, you know, it's gonna come our way. Where's the best place to put it? How, how would it make the town better?
How does it create community?
Yeah, that too. Exactly. Yeah.
Where's the connection with like the school system of all the growth that's happening? I know there's like three major.
I mean, the tag, you're talking about money now, aren't you? Taxes, the school system?
Well, who, I mean, who, not even the money, but like, who is, I guess, maybe the representative of the school? It's like, we're gonna have a bunch more people living in Swansea now. Like, can the school handle it? Just curious who?
Nobody on the board is, this, you know, we can have someone from the school board come here if there's something that we're talking about, but, but yeah, there's no representative from the school board onto the planning board officially anyway. And in certain cases, the town can take that into consideration, but I know that you gotta be careful about not accepting or not, not approving an application on those grounds that, oh, it's gonna overcrowd our school system. Because it is.
I didn't even necessarily mean using that as a reason why we shouldn't allow an application. I just was wondering like who looks at that?
Oh, everyone should. We all should, all of us. It's all, all on our job to look at that and bring it up at the meetings. It may not fly, it may not do anything, but it's for all of us to look at all those different avenues and bring them to the meeting and, which is another thing which is good to have. If it's a large project, in my opinion anyways, to have more than one public hearing or extended public hearing, because there are things you think about after the public hearing that you say, darn it, you know, I wonder what the heck that was all about.
I ask that question.
But if it's extended to another meeting, then you have the chance to think it over and go to that next meeting and raise those issues and stuff too. Sometimes, you know, a lot of times we've been, uh, accepting application, public hearing, approval, and be done with it. And that's okay for smaller projects, I think. We don't have to, you know, pace it out for the, the applicant. But for larger projects, we might wanna be in the habit of just giving it a break, uh, think about it till the next meeting.
We, we can, like you said before, we can always ask for an impact statement. I mean, doesn't mean we're not gonna approve it. But like we did the last one, they were very good about giving us an impact, uh, uh, income and economic impact to the town. They spell out the fact that it only had 10 students and there was gonna be a positive cash flow for the town over the property taxes, over what it's gonna cost to educate the kids.
And again, on any of those, on any of those impact statements, traffic or, or economic or whatever, if the planning board thinks that there's something off about it, because it's, it was done by them. The planning board can have their own independent person do whichever impact statement it is, have them pay for it and, and see if they compare or not. You know, we don't have to take their word for all that stuff. And sometimes we don't. Most of the times we do, but sometimes they are a little bit off. And the planning board has done that before. Engineering as well. If something isn't quite right there, engineers may not have it right, or we don't think they have it right or something, we can have those types of studies as well.
You made me think of something that I wanted to bring up before, was this, uh, Route 12. On the original approval for the Asher, what was going to be done with the, uh, demolition materials? Would that have been on his site?
It may not have been on the site plan itself. It may have been mentioned in a meeting. I don't recall them saying they're gonna take demolition stuff and recycle it at his original site plan. I recall that being.
That'd have been something that the planning board, you know, because I, I wasn't part of it then, when that was approved. With that, you know, where this person is assuming.
They, you mean, would it be a violation of their approval? Something like that?
Yeah, I mean, what was, what was actually stated by Olson for, with Asher that is going to be done with it? And it would definitely conflict with what he's talking about.
Yeah, I don't see that it would. Another board member might, I don't know, but I don't see that it would have anything to do with it, because again, that's just part of the construction process as to what they do. The end result, we need to be concerned with. If it doesn't turn out like we approved, yeah, that's a problem, but.
Sorry, I go off on tangents like that.
Oh, you should though, you know, because that's how you get good discussions. Yeah. That's, that's what we're discussing. That's how we all figure out how all this stuff works. Interesting to know. Sarah, do you have anything to add?
Um, well, regarding the demo, just that they have to come in for a permit for that. So Mike oversees that process. You know, he's not on site watching the whole thing, but he oversees, he knows what their intentions are for any materials that are coming down. And they do have to get approval through him for that. So it's not something that just happens, you know, there's, there's oversight.
I know, we wanted a piece of land and there was an old trailer on, we had it dumped, we had it kicked down and demo and then get rid of the, the tourists and stuff. And Mike was right on the ball, even though he knew me, he still was ready to check and ensure us recycling that stuff where it's supposed to go. Mike is really good about that stuff.
So the planning board used to, uh, as a standing order, we used to approve an application as complete at one meeting, but not have a public hearing until the next meeting. That was standard issue we did for all of the public hearings. Uh, we don't do that anymore, mainly I think because we haven't had any big projects really. There have been small stuff, which I think, like I said before, it doesn't really pay to make the applicant go through all those hoops if we don't need them to, but for larger projects, we might, we might, we might want to think about that, just to approve it. Uh, we can have them do a presentation and open up the public hearing, because when we're looking for the completeness of the application, we really just need them to go over why they think their application is complete, you know, what have you put on there? We have a checklist to go by. They could go by our checklist. So, okay, this is where we put the such and such. The whole reason through there to see if the planning board agrees it's complete. Lots of times that can get, and has in the past gotten into a presentation where it lasts for an hour, two hours. We, all we need is the information as to what's complete on that application. So we should try and hold the applicant just to that, to state what's on the application. Planning board, if we think it's complete, fine, we'll, we'll vote that way. If not, we'll tell the applicant what they need to bring back to the next meeting to make it complete. And then start it from there. But on larger projects, again, I think maybe we ought to just accept the applicant's, application is complete. Open the public hearing, hear the presentation, and then just continue it to the next meeting. I don't know if anyone else thinks so or not.
I think on the last project, you're right, because it's a lot of information to digest and you go home and you think about things. And you may come up with questions like Scott was saying before, that you didn't think of that at the meeting at the time.
So.
And importantly, that would give an opportunity for all of the other boards within the community to review the applications, you know, Conservation Commission only meets once a month.
That's right.
And it's important that they have an opportunity to review and present comments.
But they're supposed to be reviewing it before it gets started, because it's been in town all for quite a while, right?
Well, not necessarily.
Not really.
I mean, the timelines, um.
Because of the monthly meetings, those timelines might be off.
Exactly.
Yeah, so that would ensure, at least, yeah, that the rest of the boards would get a chance to look at it.
I thought we discussed part of that a couple of meetings ago, referencing the conservation. They, they weren't able to look at something that was being presented to us before it was presented to us.
Yeah.
As a conflict.
Yeah, and that.
The problem is you may can't, they can't discuss it via email. They have to meet, and they only meet once a month, where you guys are meeting twice a month. So an application comes in right after they've just met. And then, right, and they, you know, can't, can't really discuss it between themselves until the next time they need.
Yeah.
Months after you're reviewing the application, because you've got a second meeting during the month.
Or may have already approved it, because, you know, sometimes with the accepting it and, and not so. I'm not sure if we ought to do that for most of the applications then. Because even if it's a small application in for just a small little, I don't know, store or something like that, Conservation Commission might still have something to say about it on the property.
Is it just them that we have to keep in consideration?
No, all the rest of the, the police department, the recycling center, I think, chimes in on it, the sewer department chimes in on it. Yeah, they all chime in on it, but they don't have to meet like the Conservation Commission.
I wonder if we just, like we do for regional impact, we, that we just think, all right, does anything here have some conservation impact that we should?
We shouldn't have that authority over the Conservation Commission. The planning board should not have that authority.
Just not, not over them, but just like, yeah, we should, you know, make sure that this project, we hold for them to.
But if we took that vote and the vote of the planning board was, nah, there's nothing on that that those guys, they select on, then we're overstepping our bounds, so.
Wouldn't it be proper to put, you know, a condition or stipulation into, if something appeared as though the Conservation Commission would need to look at it, you know, if there's.
Oh, like we do other boards, yeah. Um, I don't think, not with the Conservation Commission. I don't think so, because what, we don't know what they're gonna bring up, but they have, you know, their study is off in one direction. That's far from us, or from me anyways. So I think that, yeah, we should just have their input. The other departments are, they're like conditional approval on a permit, building permit, or whatever it is, you know, that's fine, but I don't know about the Conservation Commission. What do you think, Beverly? They, they shouldn't be a condition.
The issue is, I think, and Jason speaks this, Conservation Commission is very focused on the well-being of the land, the water, you know, the, the, the lake, the body of the water. And so that's their focus. And, and you guys don't need to be doing that. That's their role. So you each kind of focus on your own area of expertise. Your, your experts perhaps in the zoning ordinances and what site plan reviews are all about. They don't know that, but their input is valuable because they're focused on what they need to be focused on to contribute to your understanding of what the project will do to the land.
So what we need to do is just find a way to make sure that we've got the input from the Conservation somehow.
Then, then maybe we ought to have it. If we don't have their input, then it automatically goes to another meeting. Even if we accept it as complete, we don't have their input, it just automatically goes to the, another, open a public hearing. So let's, let's have, let's do that.
Yeah, I know, but when I was on the Conservation Commission and Jason speaks to this, it was an issue. Because there would be plants that would be going through, Conservation Commission had no input because it was, the timing was bad. And after the fact, we would learn that this thing had been approved and it was, it was not a good situation for the town.
Yeah.
Well, it just negates the purpose of the Conservation Commission.
And it snubs them as well.
They have an issue. Well, I agree. I mean.
I just point to the fact that we need to get a meeting at least once between all the commission and zoning board, the planning board, and maybe even a follow-up. We'll have one with Suckman here. We need to hash these things out to what works best for everybody.
Uh, yeah, I suppose, but we need to hash it out what works best for the planning board and, and decide what we're gonna do for that and how we're gonna handle those things. And talking about it like this is, brings up all these points as to if somebody misses it, or we don't get their input or something like that, then we can decide something like we did just now, that we should always have their input, otherwise we just go to the other meeting automatically. And that would be for large or small, I would think, cycling.
I have sort of a question, comment. So you're saying specific to site plans. I'm just thinking about our multi-tenant application and many of those, not all of those, are not actually impactful on the town at all. It's a simple business operation that is maybe very similar to a business operation that has existed in the same building in the past or in other parts of town that are, that are like, they're in kind. And many times business owners are. That are like, they're in kind and many times business owners are renting a space for at least six weeks before they get approval. To put an open sign up because they're waiting for approval from this board. And maybe part of the conversation can be what threshold might be handled administratively. So you could still hear about it, but maybe that business could press go before waiting.
So maybe it should be just for site plans and not multi-tenant?
I don't know, but.
That's not really, because the multi-tenant, yeah, isn't really a site plan, it's a multi-tenant application where the site plan has already been approved and presumably through the. Uh, conservation commission and all that prior to that whole site being approved and then, then we do multi-tenant applications. Whereby they don't have to go through a full site plan review because it's in a business similar to that there or vice versa, it's set up for multi-tenant. So, multi-tenants probably should not fall under that, because the site plan has already been approved and done. And presumably with the conservation commission, it should just be site plans, I think.
We've talked about streamlining some of the um. Hoops that the people have to go through and I think that, uh, that would be one of the, one of the items that could be handled. Within the office, not coming for us.
Clarify what item though, are we talking?
The multi-tenant, like where you already have an approved building or approved site. And it's broken down into smaller businesses rather than having them to come in and before the board or something like that.
It still should come before the planning board because they still have neighbors. And the neighbors, the public should have the right to come in and say, well, you know, I saw those guys with a business like that up in Keene and they were just this or that or whatever. Just give them their day in court, uh, and then prove it or not approve it, that's just my take on that, you know. The public has the right to, to hear it. You know, we do that, the sign applications, home occupations that um are handled administratively. But the rest of the stuff I think should come to us. So, I know, stuff to think about. Anything else to discuss or wailed on or?
Under that specific topic?
Any topic. Yeah, anything other, other.
Something that Jane brought up earlier and have a note on this. We improved the um. Lot changes for Pappas. And some of the stipulations that were meant in that and his business and his inspection and all that. Was that he was going to move the trailers to the back part of the property. He was going to be putting up some sort of screen. To screen the business from the street. And the word paint the trailers green.
He was gonna move them, right? Yeah, they got that out of there, but yeah, nothing else is done. So the planning board doesn't go anywhere on that, because it's very specific, we are not enforcing, we don't, do not have the right to enforce any of, of the decisions we make. The selectmen do and then they pass it on down to the code enforcement officer, that's how the whole thing works, so. Anyone else, one of us is a. A citizen, right, thank you, we can make a complaint about things to the selectmen or to code enforcement and, and have them act on it, but. It's code enforcement or the designee of the selectmen that does enforcement and the planning board does not. We can discuss it at meetings and stuff like that, but there, there is never a vote or anything taken on it, because we don't, we are not allowed to do that under our sense. And it, it's good, because, you know, division of power, we shouldn't have that, no.
Mike is usually a response, because I go, you know, when I'm traveling around town, I see things, I go to Mike and say, hey, this is what's going on.
And, and our whole system is complaint dripping, you know, so that's, that's how it works.
How many things he has to take care of?
That's why when you do it, you don't call them up the next day, say, I come and this is done.
Down the road for me is a place that's, it's known residential agriculture on the. And they're doing something with old wrecked cars and race cars and stuff on one acre. Next to a conservation property and it's really something. And their next door neighbor has animals and everything and they hear revving engines over there all the time, they did everything. So Michael went over and, and talked to them about it and then the next thing you know, there were tarpaulins. Affixed and stretched tightly between the trees, oh, I call it the tarp garage. It, it, you can't really see the cars unless you look for the ones that are behind the tarp, but most days there aren't. There's not room behind the tarp for all the cars. It's really something and I mean, maybe he thinks. Their barn doesn't really look pretty either, you know, they got all these animals and birds and everything running around over there, but they're in the right zone. They can do that, the horses of the street can mess around in their lot, that's okay, because that's agricultural. But messy old cars are not agriculture. And I hope they're not residents, I hope the waste isn't. That could, maybe you'll get around to telling them.
Talk about just workforce housing for a second, again, back, back to that subject there. Uh, six seventy-four says that we have to allow workforce housing in a majority of where we allow residential use. It says nothing about allowing workforce housing in our business zones. And it looks like that's where a lot of that housing is going to go, because that's where the infrastructure is, that's where the water is, uh, that's where the sewer is and that type of stuff. We could um present for zoning, that workforce housing is only allowed in residential zones and still be okay underneath that RSA. Something to think about for zoning later on. Um, we wouldn't, I don't think we'd get in trouble by allowing um. Other than workforce housing to go up in business zones. Uh, because I, since they have that specific statute that names workforce housing, we could have one in our zoning that names workforce housing. And it is, is allowed in, sorry, residential on, something like that, just something to think about.
So if we, if we suggested for zoning to have only workout, workforce housing in residential. But our residential doesn't have the resources to. Supply.
Yeah, the infrastructure in there, yeah. That could be considered disallowing it, but the statute does not say that there has to be those utilities in the town. It just says that you have to allow it in the majority of the residential zones. And I don't know how many residential zones in town would fit that bill, not sure. Or we can leave it alone, even as it is now, it's just something to think about.
But if it goes in, they have to get zoning board approval to get it put into business.
Uh, special exception, yeah, but, yeah, it goes to the CBA, right? But, you know, we're using up a lot of our business land for housing, which, you know, yeah, you need housing, but you need businesses.
You need businesses to protect us.
So, anything else to discuss? If not.
I have a very small thing, um, the New Hampshire Municipal Association puts out a handbook that we were talking about earlier. We, Mr. York has one with him tonight, that's similar to the RSA book that everybody wants, but I can't give you yet. Um, has very similar information, but it's also digested a bit, so it'll type out the RSA and then say, here's what it means. Here's some cases that support what happened, would you folks like me to print these off for you and bring them the most recent version to the next meeting?
Everyone should get a copy of that. And also, uh, what Sarah sent out, was it today? Today or whatever, yeah, those are great, just send those out, yeah, if you find something like that, send it out, if you don't like it, we'll just delete it.
Okay, I don't wanna overstep my role.
No, no, you're not, you're, you're great, that's good, we appreciate that. Anything else? Motion for a German by Jane, is there a second? Second by Richard, is there any further discussion? All those that favor indicate by saying aye.